Okay, it's Friday, May the 22nd at nine o'clock. Sorry, Friday, May the 22nd, nine o'clock, special meeting of the Board of Directors. Okay, it's call to order. Take the roll call. Jan Craig?
Yeah.
Bill Kraut?
Chair.
Mary Langdon?
There.
Beth Twigg?
Here.
Alex Crawford? April Salazar? Was the meeting duly noticed?
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda? And make a motion to approve the agenda? Second, can I put second?
I'll second.
Those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. The agenda is approved, fine to zero. Can I just do a sound test on Mary, please? Speak, Mary.
Testing, one, two, three.
Keep going.
Testing. Testing.
Okay, that's good. Okay, all the microphones should be on with good values. Okay, we have several things in new business. I'm gonna open the meeting by asking the chair of the nominating committee to come up and speak. Hopefully that microphone is on.
Morning.
No.
I'll just have to speak loud. Alright, I'm gonna try.
Can you hear him, Mary?
Uh, barely.
Is there a switch?
I think there's a switch up there.
No, is there a switch on your microphone?
No. Oh, yeah. Here it is.
Try now.
Yeah, I can hear, I heard it.
Yeah, I heard it.
Good morning, board up. This is probably, doing this was second best to having a wisdom to have taken out during this nominating committee. This report provides a recommendation of the nominating committee regarding applicants for current vacation vacancies on the board. The committee thanks the President of the Board for the opportunity to serve and for supporting the process that we followed in our evaluations. Our committee membership was myself, Billy Neal, Dan Ramsey, Terrell Deegan, and Mark Lewis. The only one that isn't here on the list is Terrell. The results and recommendations of the committee are ours and ours along. They represent what we feel are the best recommendations for the soon-to-be vacant positions in the upcoming election for the Board of Directors. We strongly encourage the Board to give serious and positive consideration to our recommendations. We acknowledge that none of the applicants are perfect, a perfect match for the vacancy positions. We also acknowledge that rarely if ever has any board member been perfect matched to their position. For example, requiring that the treasurer have a accounting degree or be accredited CPA is not practical, nor is it a prerequisite for application to the board. Our charge was to screen applicants and identify those applicants whom we felt were best qualified for the election. We fully understand that it is within the purview of the Board to accept or reject our recommendations. Our process to following, following the call of the Board President for applications to fill the pending vacancies in the upcoming elections, there were thirteen applicants, which is rather large. Submitting credentials indicating interest in positions. One applicant was deemed ineligible following a legal review of the covenants by the association's attorney. And one applicant was not available for an interview. We reviewed the remaining eleven candidates' applications, documents, and interviewed them individually. Our interviews followed a precise format that was consistent for each of the applicants. Based on our responses to our questions, we used the set of scoring criteria, copy also attached for you, and assigned a rating to each of these. We did this individually and privately. We interviewed three applicants on Thursday evening, May fourteenth, two thousand and fifteen. Mrs. Juvana Harper, Mrs. Diane Schellberger, and Mr. Andrew Adams. On Friday evening, May fifteenth, two thousand and fifteen, we interviewed four other applicants. Mr. Robbie Dannen, Mr. Ernest Dale Moley, Mr. Thomas Goff, and Mr. Kevin Lehner. Finally, on Monday, eighteenth, May, two thousand and fifteen, we interviewed the final four applicants. Mr. Teresa Robinson, Mr. Frank Myers, Mr. Robert Bauer, and Mr. Jeffrey Roberts. Now, all interviews were video recorded since one member, Billy Neal, was out of town on the first two nights of the interviews. Once he returned, we watched each interview and assigned a rating to each applicant as well. Our recommendations. During our review of each applicant's documentation and based on our interviews, we determined that eleven applicants are qualified to serve on the Board of Directors. Based on our discussion and ratings assigned, following each interview, the nominating committee is highly recommended for the Board of Directors and endorsed the following applicants as best qualified. The one was Frank Myers, two was Kevin Lehner, third Andrew Adams, fourth Teresa Robinson. The remaining applicants, we feel, were also qualified candidates and could be considered in the following order of recommendation. Jeffrey Roberts, Robbie Dannen, Juvana Harper, Robert Bauer, Diane Schellberger, Ernest Dumeal, and Thomas Goff. Mr. Goff, by the way, would make it an excellent person on your architectural thing. That was noted. Based on our rating systems, the points and separation between applicants were as close as zero point two points in several instances. This indicates the overall quality of the applicants and their responses during the interviews. The nominating committee wishes to thank the President of the Board for allowing us to serve in this important task. We also wish to thank the general manager for his support to us with scheduling and other logistical and administrative tasks. As stated above, we believe the four applicants were highly recommended, would be a solid contributions to the Board. If the Board prefers not to select any of these four candidates, that is their priority. The attachments for two thousand and fifteen interview process and questions in the two thousand, twenty, two thousand and fifteen interview evaluation sheet. We do have some additional recommendations. The nominating committee recommends that the association purchase training software that covers the duties and responsibilities of members of the Board of Directors for homeowners associations. We feel having the training software available will be beneficial for anybody interested in applying for future elections. To be better prepared to serve on homeowners association Board of Directors. That was one of the items that we all noticed that it's a hard road for you all to learn, and if they could learn in advance before they even apply, it'd be a great thing. The nominating committee highly recommends that all outgoing members of the Board of Directors provide written synopses of their duties and responsibilities, as well as status of current issues or items being worked on by that board member. Certainly, this will add in the transition from one board to another. I'd like to thank you for serving, and please don't ask me to do it again.
Can I ask one question in the interest of accuracy? Ernest Dumeal, which is spelled differently in different places, since we're gonna have to put this on the ballot, is this one word, two words?
Uh, Mr. Dumeal is right here. Sir. Come on, Dave.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The legal part, is the last name, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, I've got two, in some places I've got two names, and then in another place I've got one. They go in together.
Yeah. Sometimes when you see the one, it's made for ease of people so they don't separate, but it is separated. It's a capital D, A, L, L, D, capital M, oh, L, L, D.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Beth.
Do you have questions?
Mary, do you have any questions for Pat while you're on the podium?
No.
Anybody?
Yes, where is the video from the interviews? Has it been destroyed, or has it been authenticated, or what?
You still have, no, I actually have all the videos. Our intent was not to video them just so that they can be used to publish, but, I mean, if the candidates themselves would like for them to be used, then I'm certainly willing to give them up. But we only did it as our process so that with Billy Neal being absent those first two nights, he would be able to come back and watch them and evaluate. Because with five of us on the committee, we didn't feel it was fair with him being out of town not being able to see those.
Well, I can understand that. So, your intent with the videos is to give them to the candidates if they wish to use them?
If they, yeah, certainly.
And if they don't wish to use them, what is your intent?
Then I'm gonna destroy.
Okay.
I do wanna say, Ms. Lewis was the, probably the best person on the committee overall. And thank you for doing that.
Well, I should like, on behalf of the Board and the membership, to thank the committee for their work. We appreciate all the time and effort you spent in it. That would be Pat Traynor, Billy Neal, Dan Ramsey, Terrell Deegan, and Mark Lewis. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
I've got one more question from back. What is this little red mark down on the side?
Red mark?
It's right here, hon. Okay, because this should be told. Well, they, they, there's a tie for three. That's why he's got a fine on there.
Basically, let me explain, because it's easier.
Yeah.
Pat, you're a wonderful guy, but you have a hell of a time explaining things. Anyway, basically, the spreadsheet was used so that we could put the scores in, and then it automatically totaled the scores and then averaged them. And then in order for us to figure out how those scored ranked up, I moved the people up and down the spreadsheet based on, the highest score was number one, the second highest was number two. We actually had two people tied score, so they would be three and four, but I just put two threes on there because without us actually sitting there saying, okay, well, we wanna pick that person three or that person four, you can kinda see that they had the exact same score, the same average, so they were tied three. And then the next person was number five, six, seven, eight, all the way down to eleven.
Okay, and, I mean, personally, I can't, but then I can't often read this stuff with, without, even with the glasses. The red writing on top of the blue is almost impossible to read, to make.
Well, that was more for my purpose, simply because I made some clerical errors.
Okay.
And I had to go back in, and where you see the blue with the highlighted red numbers, when I went back and double-checked each of the score sheets with the spreadsheet, I had to make some changes and put the actual numbers back in there. The correct numbers that I should've put in there the first time. So there were one, two, three, four, five clerical errors that I made. I put the actual numbers, I did not change scores on the evaluation sheet. I just took the correct number on the evaluation sheet and entered it into the spreadsheet. And then I sent those spreadsheets to the other four committee members so that they could value, you know, see that I made those changes and that it didn't change the actual scores that they had written down. Because I went back and circled and initialled everything on the scores on the actual evaluation sheets. Tried to be pretty damn thorough because everybody's nitpicking around here.
Okay, thank you.
And I would add that controlling those ballots, that they checked in, there was none lost, and you had good control of that also. So I was glad to see that for a change.
So actually, we have twelve qualified candidates, is that correct?
Yes.
I said one, two, three, four, five.
Technically, yes, Pat, yes, because the only thing is, is, I mean, if you looked at-
Yeah, twelve, yes, sure.
If you looked at the one guy who we didn't interview, he met the qualifications as far as the covenants, we just didn't get interviewed on.
Okay.
And as long as all of the, the only, the only part I'm not quite sure about yet is, did they all have checks on them?
Yes.
Okay, then the answer is yes.
Except for the one that he didn't do the interview for.
We still have to check them. To see if he's, we have to check him to see if, if he's gonna run, he can run without the interview, but in fact, if you read the email I sent out to him and to the Board, it says on that email that, you know, even though you didn't get interviewed, you can still run for the Board, blah, blah, blah. But I think in the end, anybody that does run for the Board, you have to ensure that they're qualified to do that, whether they want to quit the committee or not. Because that's a requirement in the covenants that, or I'm sorry, on seven twenty, that they not be, it's a felony. Or, yeah, I think it's a felony, so.
Well, all the papers that I got back from you guys had a check, and some of them had checks, and they completed, I'm assuming they completed was for the interview process when they returned.
Right, right. But I'm saying, it's just the felony part that you have to check on.
So, so, I was like, are they on the check?
Mark, that's it. He's not on this list.
Now, I, I'm not sure that a background check has been used in the past.
Yes, it has. Yes, it has, and it is required by the law, by seven twenty, not, not a background check. What seven twenty says, and, I'll let the manager answer this. I think what it says is they cannot circle on the Board if they are convicted felon.
Yeah, so everybody, but I, I'd like to follow something up that he said, please. So, everybody understands the process. There is no discussion as to, that the committee sits there and says, we like this person, we don't like this person, whatever. That is not the process that we're doing. We have a sheet, and we have questions, and we check off, write down a specific number, you know, that we think they qualify. Now, there may be a better system out there. In my case, I made a mistake. I know I do make mistakes every once in a while. But anyways, in Juvana Harper's case, it said, one of the questions was, you know, how often can you, I think it was a ten. Yeah, are you available to, to come to all the meetings and duh, duh, duh? And top score was five, she was the first to interview, top score was five. One was, you know, she couldn't ever be here. But I wrote it wrong, but I tried to correct it, but the committee wouldn't go along with it. But, but anyways, I want everybody to understand that, that none of us know what the other one grades these people. The only person that knows is the secretary. And of course, he doesn't tell anybody anything, so, so nobody really knows until the very end of, you know, who's who. But all the candidates were great, all of them had, you know, good qualities and stuff. You know, so, it's a stupid process to me, but it is what it is.
The secretary was Mark, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we called my, we, we know secretary, it's right.
Ah, okay.
It's right.
Okay, squad.
We probably could've put names and address them out and probably come up the same results, I'm not sure. Because it is a process that's flawed, no matter how you do it. I mean, we try to do as openly and as honestly as possible. I don't think anybody, they can question it, but I think it'd fall on deaf ears because it was done honestly, out in the open, above board. And I think that's all you can hope for from a committee.
Again, thank you very much.
Well.
Hey, Pat, I do have one, one more question for you.
You need to get out of this before five.
We have twelve applicants?
Yes, sir.
Is it the position of the committee that all twelve applicants should be allowed to?
No, sir, there was one that, uh, yes, all of the applicants, yes, yes. There were only one person that didn't make the cut, and that was the legal. Yes, everybody else, Tim Ryan, the only difference is that somebody interviewed you, and you got rated by us, and you either pick them or don't pick them, or whatever.
So the committee's recommending that all twelve be off the board and get running and?
Well, if you know how it works normally, the Board has, has the option of, the Board believes that you's the best qualified candidate, and that usually comes from the committee. But, not all the time, and it doesn't always work that way. Past boards have said, thanks for your information, you know, we'll take it under consideration, we'll do what we want, which, I mean, that's what's happened in the past. So you're not bound, if you read covenants, you're not bound by this, you know, to say, oh, these are the people who got put in. And you still have, and in the end, the most important part to me, the, the, the very, very most important part in the end, is the people out there that have the right to vote and should vote. No matter what the Board says, no matter what this committee says, I think they should vote to the person they think is the best, because they're the ones that have told with the Board. Well, you know, I, I've seen a lot of three years, a lot of discussion, a lot of dissent, a lot of hate. And I, you know, it bothers me because I'm like, here, people put them there. It doesn't make any sense to me. And eventually, like I said, it's the people that put the Board there, or should, and they should learn a little bit. Thank you, Pat. You're welcome.
Can I just give the history of last year? Last year, there were ten applicants, only three, because we had shifting dates, only three were interviewed by the nominating committee, and the Board felt that the fairest way to go was to not pay up anybody, put all the names in the hat for order, and list them on the ballot in, in that way. And everybody that was qualified, was qualified as a member in good standing, was on the ballot.
Yes, ma'am. The only problem I ever saw last year is that they missed the date. How do you miss the date for the election, huh? How do you do that?
Well, I'm, I'm saying the, the date for the nominating committee, it was a shifting date, there were many, many dates.
Yeah, I know, like, there were lots, lots of changes. This year, we did really well, we, we did a lot of people.
Yeah.
And we did them, you know, like I said, fair and equitably, I don't think, if anyone felt they weren't treated fair and equitable, I'd like them to see me, and I, I tried to explain to them that it was, and, you know, thank you for that.
No, this year, the date, the deadline date was posted, and it was adhered to, it wasn't shifted, it was shifted many times last year. And you all did, stayed with that date.
Well, thank you very much, and, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and many more.
Okay, so we have twelve members, no, not thirteen. One applicant was deemed not eligible to run from the attorneys because they had run last year and served, I think, nine days. So, not thirteen, we have twelve eligible candidates to run.
Madam President, has anybody offered up their name to me? In, in the office, or do you think they have that right? Do they?
None, that's, I, no.
Is this it?
This is it, this is it. This is it for the ballot, because, yeah. Yeah, we're determining, this has to go to the printer this afternoon, so.
Right.
Or before, we can do that.
Is there anybody in the room that wants to? Oh, is that what you just asked? Oh, I'm sorry. Come on.
Okay, so we are here to determine the order on the ballot, and whether or not we are going to accept the recommendation of the nominating committee for the four listed candidates. So, can I have any comments from the Board as to order on the ballot? Are you there, Mary?
Yes.
Why don't you spell the better way? Is that what you meant?
I, I would be happy to that.
No, great, all right. I think it's a special. It's on the hat, you put them on, put them on that way, that way.
Okay.
Yeah, even better. Yeah, that way it gets hot.
Could, could you, could you get the names?
Wait, wait, not, not, they should have just been, after the lines.
I agree with that.
She's agreeing with that.
You're agreeing with what, Mary?
Drawing the names.
Drawing your names. That's fair.
Okay, um, could you make the, the hat and the names? And let's have, uh-
I can. You can.
Okay, let's see who we got here. Okay, Mark, would you go with April, please, and make sure all the names are put in evenly? So that's twelve names you're putting in.
How many did y'all draw, in four?
Twelve. No, no, this is order, this is order on the ballot.
Whose name is first, whose name is second?
It's just ballot order, just ballot order.
So, well, I guess before we do that, though, I guess the question would be, just like Pat had, the nominating committee recommended the top four names on there to be the ones endorsed by the Board of Directors. The question is, is have y'all agreed to do that? And if so, those would be the top four names, and then five through eleven would be in the order that we recommended on the spreadsheet. Am I right?
That's right.
So the question is, is are y'all making a motion and passing the motion to take our recommendations and endorse the top four? Or are you just gonna list all four with no endorsement of any particular candidate and have all eleven names on there? And at that point, there's no reason to worry about the order of?
Well, why can't we draw the names in the hat like that suggested? And then you just put an asterisk by the name of the people that were recommended?
There's nothing wrong with that, I think that's been done before.
Well, if that's the case, just put it alphabetically and put the asterisk by the ones you're endorsing. Maybe you don't have to put it in any order, just do it alphabetically. I mean, if you're not gonna endorse it in the order that we put it, you don't need to draw a name on the hat, just list them alphabetically and put an asterisk beside it with four names that you're, you are specifically endorsing as a board, as the four best candidates. Or don't even put an asterisk on there all, and list them alphabetically and go with it.
But if they're going to do alphabetically, then it needs to be on the sheet that you are just doing this alphabetically. It doesn't mean-
In no order of endorsement.
Correct. You need to put that disclaimer.
Sure, we, we would do that.
Right.
Well, let's go with, let's do that one, go alphabetically, with an asterisk by the name of the groups recommended by the committee, with a disclaimer like Mark just said.
Do we wanna do that, Board, or what? Can I have a, a motion or something?
Make a motion to list the names alphabetically, indicate the four recommended candidates by the nominating committee with an asterisk, and put a disclaimer before the names indicating that they are not in any specific order. Insofar as, I don't know how to say, insofar as, uh-
They are listed in just alphabet.
Yeah, they're simply listed alphabetically, candidates recommended by the Board are indicated with an asterisk.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's motion and seconded to list the candidates alphabetically, with the candidates recommended by the nominating committee, if the Board so accepts, indicated by an asterisk. Right? Okay, okay. Um, can we vote on that? Those in favor of doing that, say aye.
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 Mary? Okay. Those opposed, say nay.
Say nay.
You gotta say one on the other. Yeah, I know. I think we should just list them as is.
No further discussion.
But there's, there's four.
Well, you don't even ask for discussion.
Okay.
This is purely for the order on the ballot.
I think we should just list them as is.
The listing of asterisks is how they scored on the ballot?
Yeah.
Oh, the interview process?
I'm trying to make it fair. I think it should be listed as is, so, so, on their nominating committee overall, the Board.
So you'll vote as nay? Okay. Okay, and I vote nay. So can we have another motion? Could we have another motion?
I make a motion that we list the candidates as is on the nominating committee interview overall score sheet.
Okay, it's motion, yeah. It's motioned and seconded to list the candidates as are listed on this paper. We're gonna determine afterwards whether we're gonna take the, this is just for listing the candidates. Any discussion?
Okay, I disagree with doing it that way. We recommended four, if you put them in the specific order that they scored, that's like having a recommendation from agency. Yeah, so I don't think it's right to do it that way. I think the other way is better.
But this is the nominating committee's recommendation.
The recommendation are.
Can I accept it?
No. They recommend four candidates. They don't order in order of score to the covenant.
But the membership is not gonna know what their scores are. Correct?
They don't have to know the score, Rob. They just have to know, and don't think that they won't find out that they're listed in the order for the top four to the worst. You know, I don't think it's right doing it that way.
Why not?
Why not? This is the nominees.
Because that's like, that's like, that's like going beyond recommending four. That's like going beyond recommending four, in my opinion.
But this is not the board's thing, this is the nominating committee's thing.
Well, yeah.
Well.
Okay, let's.
I agree with them in the order that they score. On the ballot, I mean, if they recommend that.
In your short favor.
They go back to, I was supposed to draw the names.
I'm talking right now, please. If you'd like to say something, you can come stand up here, okay? Frank Myers scored the highest, so.
You're endorsing a candidate. Did you put it in the order?
Excuse me, I'm still talking.
Are you?
Yes.
Please, please allow the person speaking to speak.
Don't even do this again. You do this, and that's me.
What makes it high?
Please, when you come to order, sir.
If you don't like what's going on, you can leave. How about that?
No.
Okay.
So you can ask, you can ask.
We have a discussion right here with the board.
Yeah, this is a board discussion. Please continue, Mr. President.
You know what? I don't give a rat's ass. You just do whatever you want.
All right. And you, you, sir, are being very rude.
Yes, you are.
And I'm sick of it. Every meeting that I come to, you've got to come up here and be rude to people.
Um, please note, please note for the order, please. Please note for the minutes that Mr. Carl was mentioned by name as being out of order three times. Dan, Dan.
May I be now, yes, is that true?
Dan, hang on one second, can we stop this? Please, please, can we have some order?
Can we all just get along?
Apparently not.
Okay, please, for the minutes, Mr. Carl has been called to order by name for disturbing the meeting, just like that noted in the meeting. Please go ahead, Ms. Harper.
In order, just for due process, maybe it would be a good idea to accept, to make a motion to accept the recommendations that forth by the nominating committee, and then make a motion as to how they will be on the ballot. That would first kind of do it as an order, thinking.
Okay, can we, can you resend your motion? So we've only got one at the same time. You had a motion to order them as is. Can we take that motion back? Resend that motion?
Yeah.
We're in the middle of a motion, and we need to get that off the table. Yeah. Just resend your motion to.
Why do I wanna resend it? I mean, I, I'm taking what the nominating committee is recommending. All right, I'll resend my recommendation.
Okay. Okay, then let us determine whether we are going to, whether the board will accept the top four. There are four socks, there are four recommendations. Whether the board will accept the four recommendations of the committee. I will make a motion. The board will accept the four recommendations of the nominating committee. Do I have a second?
Could you name them?
Frank Myers, Kevin Lanier, Andrew Adams, Teresa Robertson. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, it's motioned and seconded to accept the recommendation of the nominating committee to, the board accept the recommendation of the nominating committee, and the board recommend Frank Myers, Kevin Lanier, Andrew Adams, and Teresa Robertson. The discussion of the board. Okay, then.
I have something.
You're also a member of the nominating committee. Why don't you just accept the entire report of the nominating committee rather than pick out a portion that you want to address? What about the rest of the report? The nominating committee's report included, these are the top four, and the other are all qualified. And list them in that order. You don't have to do this. You can certainly put them in a hat, or throw them out, or do whatever. Accept and endorse the report. That's the process it's supposed to have. Or don't accept it. And then do it however you want to.
I believe the process for the covenant is to accept or not the recommendations for four nominees, or more. No, the number of seats, the nominees.
It says one.
They can nominate them, yeah, right, but to accept as an endorsement. So we have this motion on the table, and I'm gonna ask for a vote.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, could you repeat the motion?
Okay, I, I'm, okay. Okay, the motion on the table is to accept the, the board accept the recommendation of the nominating committee to recommend Frank Myers, Kevin Lanier, Andrew Adams, and Teresa Robertson as recommended candidates for the board. Those in favor, say aye. Mary?
Just, just to be clear, these aren't the only people that are gonna be listed on the ballot.
That's correct.
Okay, so I, I would say this.
Well, we're voting, yes. Beth, are you voting?
No.
Okay, those opposed to accepting the nominating committee's four recommendations.
Nay.
Then I have to be the deciding vote and say nay. Okay, this leaves us with, everybody is an even playing field, and we draw the names out of a hat. I will make a motion to that effect, that we will draw the names for order on the ballot out of a hat. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, it's motioned and seconded to list the candidates, to list the twelve candidates in order to be determined by picking the names out of a hat, we did last year. Discussion?
So just so that I'm clear, you're completely discounting anything the nominating committee has done up to this point.
You have, you have, they absolutely.
That would appear, that would appear to be the case, yes. Since we can't make a determination.
Well, the covenants are pretty clear as to what the board is supposed to do.
No, they, they are.
The nominating committee is supposed to nominate four people to fill the four positions that are open there. So, and then everybody else is basically added on as an additional candidate who's qualified. So, it just seems to me that, you know, these people put in a lot of work, people have put in some time to come in and be interviewed. And it just, it makes more sense, why have a committee if you don't have a unit? And, you know, as a board, you can agree on a committee that you've selected, then, you know, there's a lot more issues at hand than are visible.
My personal opinion is that if all, if this part of the membership wants to run for the board, I think everybody on this list is entitled to run for the board. They all are qualified to run for the board.
They are running.
They are.
They are.
They are running. We're not eliminating anybody.
So their recommendations are, are excellent recommendations, but I feel that we need to put them, everyone needs to be put out there, there.
Equal, you mean, or you say equal?
Equal.
So in other words, let me reiterate, the motion on the table is to list all the candidates with that recommendation in order to be determined by drawing names out of a hat. Is that?
That's the motion that's on the table, that we are discussing.
Since we couldn't agree on anything else, go.
Well, I understand that, but Beth here and Mary on the phone, neither one of them understand the process. It's quite obvious, if you go back and listen to the recording, they don't understand the process. And we have spent three weeks on this process for you to come up here and make a mockery out of what we have done. Okay? I've got better things to do with my time. Now, for you to say, sit there and say, put them in alphabetical order, it really doesn't matter. Everybody on the membership is gonna figure out who they want and who they don't want, okay? We need to move on. But you need to understand the process. If you say you're gonna sit on the board, lady, then you need to understand what the process is. Not to just say, excuse me, I'm speaking. Excuse me, I'm speaking.
You list them in order.
So you're gonna ignore that I'm speaking?
Okay, let Dan finish speaking, Mr. President.
If you are not gonna accept the nominating committee's time and effort that they put into this, then you are wrong. Doesn't mean that it's right, I mean, that we picked the right people. It doesn't matter. But we went through the effort, and I've seen this happen before. Why the hell do we have a nominating committee there? Because the bylaws say we gotta have one?
Yeah.
Well, that's correct.
Yeah, it is. It is what it is.
So I think you guys need to really think about this. Because what you're doing is you're spitting in our faces as members and saying that the last three weeks that we spent on this stuff is for nothing. And that's over.
Kelly Smith, seven three one six, Lafayette Street. The covenants clearly state that the nominating committee shall be charged, charged with the duty of nominating one position for each director sought to be elected. Doesn't say that you guys have to accept it. They are charged to do this. Therefore, those four candidates that they picked are the four candidates that they're, that should be on the ballot along with the others. You don't have to accept their nomination. Doesn't say you have to accept it or deny it. It says they're charged. You charge them with that duty to pick four people to fill those positions. Therefore, it's done. What they, what they say should go.
Okay, how about, how about this?
I think, can I say something?
Speak, Mary.
Um, I think this is, I don't really know if that was speaking as far as being one of the nominating committee, but I agree with what they're saying. They just go through a lot of trouble to sort through the candidates. I did vote to put them in order of the nominating committee and put asterisks next to their names. So that that gives some validity to the nominating committee and what the, and the process that they went through. I agree with that, you know? But I don't feel that they allow, should be allowed to exclude somebody from running. So that's, that's simply all I'm saying. But I think anybody should be able to run, but that you, that you should take into effect the fact that the nominating committee racked and stacked those based on their questions and the answers of the candidates. And, and in all seriousness, they should be allowed to, to, um, to put asterisks, at the very least, put asterisks next to their names, knowing that the nominating committee, these are the people that the nominating committee wanted to have. So that's, that's just my take on it.
Okay, Mary, let me clarify for you. Nobody is being eliminated from the ballot. All twelve candidates will be on the ballot. Okay? For the covenants, the nominating committee recommend four, up to four candidates, because there are four positions open on the board. Whether the board accepts.
I understand.
Okay, whether the board accepts the nominating committee's recommendation is up to the board.
Correct.
Okay, so we are now deciding two things. Whether we accept the nominating committee's four recommendations. And it is four recommendations, not a rack and stack of the whole group. And we put everybody else in some order, we put everybody in some order, and asterisk the ones they recommend. We have many different options for doing this. I take the point that it is perhaps unfair to list everybody in a rack and stack order, even if we take their, their four candidates. That, that's beyond, beyond the scope. They recommend four, and they've recommended four. And the board can accept or reject that, even everybody else can put them in some order. Go ahead.
Joe Campbell from Great Lakes Street. I'm confused on what the disagreements are. You have four highly qualified or highly eligible, you have everybody's gonna be on the ballot, and I'm not, I'm confused as to what your disagreements are.
Uh, well, let me try and explain what the disagreements are. We've had a vote as to whether we order people by alphabetically and indicate, I guess, an alphabetical ordering, the ones that they recommended. We've had a vote to order them in this order, which people objected to because they were only supposed to recommend four. I think we've kind of got a vote right now to, and I'm not real, quite honestly, real sure, to order everybody by drawing names out of the hat and indicating with an asterisk the ones that are not the four that the nominating committee recommended.
So you have to.
And we got various options. Twelve people will go on the ballot. Let me make that absolutely clear. Twelve people will go on the ballot in some order.
So now the decision is whether to recognize the four as identified by the committee as highly eligible, apart from the others, and whether it should be, well, maybe not four, but five, six, seven, eight, in case there's five, or even stop four.
I, I, it has to be, it has to be four. Yeah, so, so.
So you in essence agree that those four should be recognized in some sense of the nominating committee said that it was highly eligible?
Uh, well, I think we're in the middle of voting on that.
Okay, thanks.
So.
But that's not, that's not the motion.
That's not the motion on the table, but yeah. Basically, let me just reiterate again. We have a decision whether we, how we order these, these twelve candidates on the ballot, and how we mark four. I think that's basically the decision. How we order the twelve and how we mark or not mark four. That's the basic. That's the basic, yeah, go ahead.
You don't have an option. You have to identify the four that were nominated by the nominating committee. Everybody else has to be on the ballot, however you put them on the ballot, that's, you guys consider all day and argue that. Those four that were nominated by the nominating, by the election process in our covenants clearly states that they will select the top four, or the four they feel are qualified. That's why you charge them with their duty. You pick the committee. You don't have to accept it, you don't have to not accept it, it is what it is. They selected those four, they're the four, according to the covenants.
Could we go back to a prior motion, I don't think we missed it. Can we go back to a prior motion? That we will list the candidates in order of the dropping a hat, but will mark with an asterisk the ones that were recommended by the nominating.
I, I think that's a good idea. I'm going to withdraw the motion that was on the table. Okay, I'm going to withdraw the motion that was on the table and ask Jan to restate this motion slowly.
I think our first, our first line is to accept the four. Are we going to accept the, I think we need to make a motion.
No, 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 they are, they are, they are the nominating committee.
But we made a motion to not accept it, so we're going to restate that.
Except they are still the nominating committee's nominees.
So, we have to reset the previous, two previous motions.
But we did, we got nothing on the table now. Do you want to have another go?
Yep.
Go ahead.
I make a motion, we accept the four top recommendations from the nominating committee.
Okay, it is motioned and seconded to accept the top four recommendations of the nominating committee. I think you've already spoken on this issue.
And you denied it.
You've already voted on this. When I said it before, I, when you were talking about voting on the nominating committee report, and you voted not to accept that. You're having the same problem the board did last year in trying to figure out how to put the names on the list. You've already said all twelve of them, the nominating committee said all twelve of them were qualified to serve. The order that's on the list is all that you need to worry about. Do your draw it out of the hat. The covenant says, and I quote, "The board of directors shall, at least forty-five days prior to election of directors, nominate a number of candidates for positions on the board of directors equal to or greater than the number of positions to be filled." That's exactly what you would be doing. You would be putting twelve names on there, not endorsing, not saying you want Joe Smith to be number one or whoever it is. But all of these are qualified, and the way that their, their name got on there is how they come out of the hat. And then you satisfied all these requirements. You got the report, you, you accept the report, I would hope that you accept the report, the work that the committee did. And now you do what you want to on how they're placed on the list.
Okay, you are...
So, instead, to make a motion? Again, confused. To make a motion to accept the nominating committee's report? Is that what, you're going to start simply that way? Okay, I make a motion that we accept the nominating committee's report.
I second that.
Okay, it's motioned and seconded to accept the nominating committee's report. Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye?
Hallelujah!
Please, order, order, order. So, we will now determine how they're going to be placed on the ballot, by draw?
If I may make a suggestion, we've accepted the nominating committee's report. Why didn't we also accept what they also say here? That there's four candidates for four positions, and that there's other remaining candidates be considered in the following order of recommendation.
No, 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 you can't do that.
Why not?
Because they're...
The nominating committee?
No, the nominating committee is supposed to recommend for the positions, not in the order. I think that's, they recommended four, they've recommended four candidates, and we've accepted that, okay? So, now, how do we order these people on the ballot?
I make a motion, we draw the names from a hat, the top four candidates that be indicated with an asterisk.
Say that one more time, you're saying, slowly.
Okay, I make a motion that we draw twelve names from a hat to use, to put them in that order, and that the people who, the top four recommendations be indicated with an asterisk.
I second that.
No? Oh, eleven, I'm sorry.
Tom Goff just called in and gave us a message that he is not running for the board due to doctor's orders.
Okay, I make a, I make a motion that we draw, draw the eleven candidate names out of a hat, list them in that order on the ballot, and then indicate the top four recommendees by the nominating committee with an asterisk.
I second that. Okay, it's motioned and seconded to list the eleven candidates by draw on the ballot, indicating the four candidates recommended by the nominating committee. Right? Those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, um, Mark, would you go with April?
Can you remember, remember them on here? Remember they're drawn. Remember the ones that are as are drawn.
This coffee?
Yeah.
While we're doing that, there's one more bit of, this is, the board needs to take care of. And that's to schedule a day and a place for the meet and greet.
We can do that.
Okay, but would you also make sure that somebody makes some kind of a sign up front of the lobby there that people can see, big enough to, because this is important.
I can do that.
We'll put it on the marquee.
On the marquee, in the front?
A marquee in, yeah, but, and on the marquee, yeah, on the... Yeah, that was on our list.
Now be before the ballots go out, right?
Well...
Why would it be after?
No, I think it's going to...
When does the nominating committee recommend that we do the meet and greet?
The ballots going out will be the first of June.
But what, what happened, what happens is that if you wait till after the ballots go out, a lot of people will go ahead and send in their ballots without coming to the meet and greet. They'll just go off of, you know, whatever, they'll just start checking stuff off.
I'll have the files.
I would recommend, me personally, that it be scheduled prior to the ballots going out. And that way, when the ballots do come, we know who, what candidates we want.
That only really leaves us, this week.
Next week, it's coming to meet and greet. I'm sorry.
I'm saying, that only really then leaves us next week.
Hello?
And to get enough information out. Um...
I mean, yeah, please, I mean, we could, all these candidates are, they're ready, aren't you?
Yeah, we're ready.
Schedule for next Friday?
Yeah, maybe.
For next Friday? Is the beach house not open next Friday, do you know?
Well, why can't we have it here?
Well, you, you can, but you're going to have a lot of candidates, or you're going to need a lot of tables.
We had a lot of candidates last time, we only got one more.
Okay, I don't, I don't care where they are. Next Friday, good for you? I don't care. Well, I'm, I'm here, rats assy.
Why are we talking about rats?
I don't have a rat's ass, but I was curious about the solution in the committee. Because it's all the committee, you're correct.
Yes.
We were charged and...
And you, yes, yes.
It has been resolved, okay.
Well, okay, let's, let's...
We need a motion, right?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Make a motion to resolve the nominating committee?
A second. Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, the nominating committee is dissolved.
Don't say never.
Okay, let's see, can we not hear? Okay, in the interest of fairness, we're going to have a start, remember Shelby? You did it already?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, can we have the order on the ballot? We're going to have the, um, first four, and then we're going to have the rest. Are they going to be in the order of what? Could you read them out for the red board?
I'll read them. I thought they were supposed to all be on?
Oh, I think that, are they all supposed to be, they're all drawn?
All drawn, yeah, and then we ask directly by the, for our background.
Okay, okay.
The order that will be placed on the ballot. Number one, Yvonne Harper. Number two, Teresa Robertson, she will have an asterisk by her name. Number three, Kevin Leder. He will have an asterisk by his name. Number four, Frank Myers, he will have an asterisk by his name. Number five, Robert Bauer. Number six, Deanne Schellenberger. I hope I said that right. Number seven, Ernest Dalmore. And number eight...
And we're going to make sure that's two names, right?
Yes, number eight, Mark Essert. Number nine, Rodney Danner. Number ten, Jeffrey Roberts. Number eleven, Andrew Adams, and he will have an asterisk by his name.
Okay, thank you.
My bill got reversed now, really?
Let's move on, um, the meet and greet. Okay, and, um, cookies will be supplied by the board as is the normal.
What kind, we have a decision?
No. Just, just, whatever kind, whatever kind. Okay, can I have a motion to, um, set the meet and greet for Friday?
What time?
Six P M. I mean, it's got to be next Friday, not today, Friday. If it's to go out before the ballots, if, if it's to be before the ballots, the law has to be Friday. Do I have a motion?
Well, could it be Thursday? Is Thursday soon enough? I think Thursday would be a better night for most people, I would think.
Friday night.
Friday.
Friday.
Friday?
Yeah.
Okay, I guess they're all Friday, Friday night, I guess, all right.
You like it?
I'm sorry.
Keep going, make a motion.
Okay, I make a motion that we hold a meet and greet, um, next Friday. I don't know the date.
Twenty-six.
May twenty-nine, at six o'clock.
A second. Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Mary? Okay, five to zero. Um, there will be a meet and greet for the candidates from six to eight on, uh, Friday. It will be placed on the marquee, and what?
Is it going to be in here?
It'll be in here, in the cafe area. And, um, we'll need a poster, flyer, something, something like that. Or whatever size can be produced, okay? But it will be on the marquee as well. Okay, now, let's move on to... What's the next thing, where, where these are going to be? I'm sorry.
Yes, I, I just have a question, sixty-nine, eight, nine, ten, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. With the bios, also the campaign, wow, how these candidates...
Yes, yes, yes. And, um, it will be put out on the website too.
Okay, thank you.
Um, in actual fact, we probably should post the, we should probably scan the candidate application like we did last time. Yeah, yeah, okay. And, um, we'll put that on the, and, and the bios, and anything you've got, put out on the website. Put the bios, the one-page bios out with the, with the ballot.
Right.
Okay, so, um, now we are determining...
Well, this is not going to be exact, because, okay, okay, never mind.
Okay, we have, April, would you like to...
I'd just like to make a comment about the meet and greet. Based on the, the ones that were conducted last year in here, you've got more candidates, you've got eleven candidates, so you're going to have eleven small groups of conversations going on here, and it gets very loud. And it's, if the beach house is available, I would recommend you think about using the beach house.
We, we need to check, Mark, I, I...
I doubt it is.
I don't recall if any of you were here for the meet and greet since the end, last year.
Yes, I was, yeah.
How about Saturday?
The conversation's going on, it gets very loud.
Yeah. Well, we'll have to check, we'll have to check. If it's going to be the beach house, it'll be posted as the beach house, if not, it'll be here, depending on what's available. Okay, we're now determining for the mail-out. April?
All right, at the last meeting, um, we had a couple of proposals for the annual mail-out. At that time, we didn't have an accurate number of how many pages was actually going to be in the annual mail-out. Um, I got all of the paperwork together for the notice, the agenda, um, the bios, the ballot, and the proxy. So, total, that's eight pages front and back. So, I went back to Cast Data and Office Depot to get quotes from them based off those numbers. Um, Cast Data came back to us, and their quote for front and back, eight inserts, which includes the setup, the mail fee, um, the postage, stuffed envelopes, all of it. The whole process was eight thousand four hundred dollars and eighty-three cents, okay? Coming back to Office Depot, the, the issue that we have with Office Depot is their pricing was better for printing, but they could not stuff or mail out, out the information. So, I got clarification that Cast Data and Office Depot could receive our copies today and make our cutoff date of June second. And Cast Data said that they could, Office Depot said that they could not guarantee that. They have a seven to nine business... They have a seven to nine business day policy. So, they can't, they can't get it to us in a time the member, the manor for it to be stuffed by anyone else to save that cost. That's just where we are as far as deadline. We did not, um, approve at the last meeting for an additional person to quote. Um, I did get one just for Big One, um, from FSI. Just so you know, in comparison to Cast Data, their quote for the exact same thing for the eight pages was eight thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy cents.
And Cast Data did it last time?
Yes.
Can we make a motion or do we have to?
So, let me just clarify. This is for everything? This is for printing, stuffing, mailing, everything?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Do they come and get it, or do we have to take it to?
I send them the electronic copy total.
Okay, and Cast Data also said if you get it to them by noon today, that you get it out. What's the schedule on that?
That, that was, um, FSI. Cast Data said if I can get it to them this afternoon by three, then they'll be good to go. So, and that should be, I mean, if you guys approve it now, we'll get done, I'll be able to send it on over.
All right, uh, I make a motion, we accept Cast Data's bid for doing the ballot mailing.
Oh, second.
Okay, it's motioned and seconded to accept Cast Data's bid of eight four hundred dollars, eighty-three cents, um, for the complete mailing of the ballots, bios, proxies, everything. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, it's approved that Cast Data will do the mass mailing. April will get that, the electronic, um, data out to them today. Are there any other issues to do with the ballot, the mailing, the meet and greet? Anything?
Just a question, are you gonna do the different colors, like you've done, the ballots are one color, the bios are a separate color, so they don't get mixed up? Prior years, everything was one color. Last year, you guys went with ballots one color.
Well, last, last year, we had two mailings, so they were different.
Yellow, yellow ballots.
No, I think they're all gonna be the same color, that was what we, what were you quoting for?
To do color, it's almost double the cost of black and white.
Yeah, yeah. So we're gonna, what, what was quoted for, that's what we, we've accepted, yeah, okay, okay. Okay, is there anything else to do with the ballots, the mailing, the meet and greet, for all of this? Okay? Can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn?
I second.
Okay, those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, it is, um, is this ten fifty-nine? I can't really-
Thirteen, it's ten thirteen.
Oh, sorry, ten thirteen, meeting adjourned.